I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Treck, the roll please.
Carrie Pies will be via phone once I get her. Jay Step, Ward two.
Here.
Kerry Roth, Ward three.
Here.
Calvin Cooley, Ward four.
Here.
Gary Fox, Ward five.
Yeah.
Alyssa Cordell, Ward six.
Here.
Thank you, Julia. The approval of our council meeting minutes from our February 20th meeting is the first item on the agenda. And council, you've had an opportunity to review these minutes, and now would be an opportunity to make any adjustments, or if there are none, a motion to approve is in order.
Much to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And the minutes, thank you, Kerry. Good to have you with us. And the minutes are approved unanimously. We've got a series of public hearings related to planning and development. Mr. Menino, if you will get us started with Z-25-01, please.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. First of all, all the zoning-related cases on the agenda tonight have been properly posted and advertised. There appears to be no conflicts of interest. This is a proposed rezoning for nine and a half acres. Currently zoned general commercial, looking to go to RA 12, which is his townhome zoning. Since the first reading, there has technically been no additions or changes. The Planning Commission did recommend denial of this application. From my understanding, the applicant does have some additional photos and elevations that he would like to present. With that, I believe there are initially a couple of recommendations when it went before the Planning Commission that came from staff. There were some additional agreements that the applicant had made dealing with a cap on rentals, 10% maximum cap on rentals to be put into their homeowners association documents, additional language in their homeowners association documents to include enforcement of no parking on the streets with the interior, and some additional landscaping along the backside at the Club Drive that the applicant was agreeable to. But with that, Planning Commission did end up recommending denial of the application.
Okay. And I don't know if you'll want to speak to it or not, but during the first reading, there was some discussion between adjacent property owners that has been worked out between the country club.
Yeah, there is a couple, the Country Club Drive is along the eastern property line of the proposed 80-unit townhome development. There is a 15-foot buffer required there. The Country Club did have some concerns about the landscaping and fencing of that area. From my understanding, they did work out of how they would like that treated. We do not have details, or I did not receive any details of that, but there is a requirement already by ordinance for it, but we don't have the details that they had worked out.
Okay. Maybe we could sort that out during the public hearing, so. Any other questions for Mr. Menino at this time? Thank you, sir. And I'll open up the floor of the public hearing for Z-25-01, and ask the applicant if they'd like to step forward and present any additional information, if you'd like. And as we do all the time, please, your name and your address for our clerk, please, in the minutes.
Good evening. Jonathan Keeler, 8325 Ainsworth Drive, Cumming, Georgia, 32041. Last time, there was some discussion about needing a variance or a special variance based on the ordinance. Tonight, in the slides, I'm presenting some pictures of a floor plan that would meet the requirement but not require a variance. So we call them front-facing rear drive with the garage. So this particular unit would face the existing Thornwood Drive. So that would be the front-facing unit with the front door. And then, in a couple more slides, it would show, I think it's the next slide, would show the rear entry garage, which is what the ordinance, from talking to David and Randy in our previous meetings, that we feel that this would meet the requirement and not require any type of variance. So this is a depiction of what it would look like. And all the streets in there are private streets in the complex. So from the original one, these are just some of the things that we came back and addressed. It won't require a variance or special variance. All new streets, Thornwood Drive and private streets are private streets. From the original plan, we decreased it from 96 to 80 lots, and then we increased the parking spaces from 211 to 288. We added the green space and a covered pavilion. And all this is kind of from the original comments last year. And then we talked about the privacy fence along Club Drive to kind of screen the project from that street. And then, you know, our feeling is it's the best use of property when it's compared to other potential commercial under its current zoning. I mean, you can drive down there and see different things that probably don't need another liquor store, another place to keep dumpsters, all fenced in on commercial properties along there.
Okay. Any questions? You would be fine with conditions that would limit you to the garages in the back?
Yes.
Okay. And have any of the, does that change the number of units that you would be able to have on that particular piece of property?
Not with that, not with that particular or that type of model.
Okay.
What are the floor plans? Do you have the floor plans?
I don't have the floor plan for that one. They can, they vary on the inside as far as what's there, what you walk into. But most of them, you're walking into probably the living room or part of the sitting room on those.
Three-bedroom, two-bedroom?
Yes, it's three-bedroom. They'd all be three-bedroom.
As I stated, a work session, so this is my ward, and I'm for your doing the number amount of homes where it's 80, or another number was spoken about, like tonight was of 72. And I think it is the best use for the property. I don't want to see another warehouse go up or storage units or dumpsters or anything like that. So what I would like to do is to come up with some kind of resolution tonight, making a motion maybe to approving a concept for tonight, and it may be, it needed me going back to the staff and for the rezoning to make sure everything is in proper order.
I don't know that that's, I think the issue before us tonight, I mean, we can't conditionally, Mr. Lovell, correct me if I'm wrong, we can't, we either need to approve the zoning or not approve the zoning and put whatever conditions we want. We can't conditionally approve the zoning, correct?
You could send it back to the Planning Commission and let, of course, go through the process. You could, of course, could, you know, in effect, what you would be doing is tabling it, not conditionally approving it, tabling it to allow them to bring you back a, I think you said, a plan of some sort showing it, what they were planning to do. So you would be tabling it to allow them to bring the plan back. However, the way our ordinance works, if you actually table a zoning request, when it comes back, you then have to have two readings again.
Go ahead.
Sure. Can we, can we just put those conditions on the front of the land development plan? Typically, and it doesn't matter other counties or cities, you know, if there's certain requirements or conditions, those are listed on the front of the land development plan, and when it's turned in, those are approved or you're given those conditions, so that we make sure.
Our staff normally does not place zoning conditions and other types of development conditions on plans when they approve, unless those conditions were first implemented or authorized by the mayor and council. If that makes sense to you. We do put those conditions on plans when they are approved, if council has told us what those conditions should be. Staff does not independently make those decisions.
Is that correct, Randy?
Yes. We had your original recommendations.
On a phone call tonight, my apologies to the audience and to those of you in the house tonight. Are we still discussing 83 units, or where are we at now?
We're on the 80 units that's proposed. They have brought drawings to us tonight that show units that have a driveway at the rear of the townhomes as opposed to the front, as was originally shown, and as.
So I got that part, but we're at 80 units now, or 83?
Yeah, it was at 80. Originally, last year, I think it was at 96, and now it is at 80. And that was what was proposed in the first reading.
At this point, are, it's still quite a lot of units for that piece of property. That is my two cents on this at this point, and I'm just going to listen to everyone else's conversation per minute.
Okay.
I think a lot of times what we'd like to see is the actual plans of the houses that you're going to build, floor plans.
Yeah.
Just everything about it, instead of just a picture.
Yeah, it's difficult to get the home builders to give you something without having the rezoning. That's, so, that's, you know.
So you're not, y'all are not building this?
No, we're, we could build it, but we're, we'd like to develop it, to bring a builder in, to build it out the way that it, you know, that it should be built out.
Yeah, I mean, for me, I think I would have to echo some of the public works. Like, I know they're private roads, but how tight they are, and if they're, you know, when you look at the plan, I know it's zoning, but I think we've been caught short here a lot of times by rezoning, and then somebody brings us the dog and pony show, sells it, and then it just goes to something else. There's, there's a prime example, not far from that, that started out really a Cadillac development. They brought all these pictures, then it got sold down to another developer, and it was still good, but not quite as good, and then it's got sold out again. And all of them look the same, they're all the same color. They had to go through several variances to get them in there. And I think that's kind of a, where I'm at is like, I'd rather see a pretty defined plan when we go to rezoning, a pretty defined plan of, you know, now that I hear that they're all going to be three-bedrooms, I'm a little bit shy of that. I think, you know, looking at the roads and the private drives, you know, how do we get, you know, fire trucks?
There's a, there's a picture on there.
Okay.
So that all the roads meet public requirements. They're as wide as a public road.
I'm just reading back what I see from public works. Their concerns and make sure that they, we see that, because I think that's important. I mean, and I know we had talked about some of this before, but I think, you know, when you look at some of those things when it comes to utilities and those types of things. So when I, I know it's a nice plan, but, you know, it's probably going to get sold, it's going to get moved. I think down here, when you look at the lower side, that's against Country Club Road, those folks are facing a, you know, a fence. I think there's some things that we can look at. Secondly, or finally, my last point would be, these are for ownership, is that correct?
For sale.
They're for sale?
Yes, sir.
And you have a 10% rental?
Right.
Or 10%, is it 10% owner?
10% cap on rental.
I do appreciate that. I think that, that's really, I appreciate ownership. I think that that really helps the quality of life in our community and builds, you know, stability and wealth. But I do think that, I would like to see, I would agree with Mr. Fox, just to see a little bit more of product of what we're going to put there.
Mayor, if I could suggest, this is the public hearing part. Y'all are really going into the discussion now, which is fine if y'all want to do that, but you may have other speakers that want to speak and all, and you may want to do this, the discussion after you hear from everybody.
Maybe I don't.
You may not. That is up to you.
Thank you. I, Keith, I'm sorry.
So they.
My non-mayor sitting.
Yeah, I will.
Personality showed up there.
So they will be different colors and different elevations on those.
So here, here's what I'm, here's what I'm hearing and where I'm processing this. It sounds like, from the first reading to the second reading, that you guys kind of got some feedback and heard what we're doing, and you're trying to adapt to that, which I appreciate that. I appreciate some of the other conditions that you had on that on the front side. I think where, what I'm kind of sensing is, we've kind of imposed, like, tonight's the second reading, and we've got to do something with this, and we've got to, got to do this. You've brought some new variables to this that staff hasn't had a chance to take a look at, and that council hasn't had a chance to really kind of process and see where we want to be. I know time is money, but there is the option to perhaps, I don't know if it's tabling or withdrawing or something that gets this thing back through, so you can work with staff to kind of go through the process again. And I hate, I mean, I understand, I mean, nobody likes to do that, but I, I think when you, if you were sitting on this side of the table, we've got kind of a, it's not a self-imposed deadline, but there's a deadline to make a decision, and given the fact that we've gotten some new information late, that we don't have an opportunity to kind of go through some of the concerns that you're hearing from everybody.
Okay.
It might be an option to, and Mr. Lovell, you said tabling it is not really, doesn't really do that. It would have to be a withdrawal, or what would it?
Well, they could, of course, withdraw, and y'all could approve withdrawing it and waive the requirement that they can't refile a similar application, you know, in the time period. Or more appropriately, what you may want to do is to send this back to the Planning Commission for further discussion. And then once the Planning Commission sees what their new plans are, or new drawings and all that, they'll make their normal, they'll make a recommendation and forward that to y'all for your normal process. Basically, you're remanding it to the Planning Commission.
Okay.
Keith, let me clarify, but if they did tabulate, it just would have to be heard twice.
Would have to be heard twice, though the first reading would not be able to happen until the second meeting in, the first meeting in April would be the earliest they could bring it back, because you would have to re-advertise.
And then if it went back to the Planning Commission, it'd be the same thing again, right? Either that, or we make a decision tonight.
If it went back to the Planning Commission, it would, more than likely, assuming they had whatever they wanted to submit, it would be heard in their meeting in April. And then I believe, from that Plan Commission, the two council readings are both in May, I think. I don't think there's one in, is it one in April? So it would be heard one in April and then one in May.
And if no action taken, is that?
Then it's denied.
Correct.
Anybody else have questions or comments for Mr. Keeler? I want to go ahead with the hearing.
Do we need to open it for the public comment, though, I guess?
I, I can.
Whatever. I don't know, I don't want to break any rules.
Why don't, why don't you sit down and think about that, ask that guy that you're paying to be here with you? And we'll continue on with the public hearing, and then we'll certainly give you an opportunity at the end before we take any action, okay? All right, we'll continue with the public hearing with Z-25-01. Anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
Hi, I'm Robert Walker here for, on behalf of Cartersville Country Club. I have, I want to say that, you know, we're here, and we have been talking to the applicant, and I have something, if I may approach, I've got a copy of some conditions. If the council decides to move forward here today. We've been talking with the applicant over a series of weeks, maybe over a month here now, and have worked out some conditions. We talked about it the last meeting that they have agreed to make as conditions to the rezoning, and much of those have already been talked about. I think Mr. Menino mentioned some of those. Some of those were listed in the applicant, or in the PowerPoint that the applicant put up. And so as a, as really as a convenience to the council, I have, you know, made a little printout here of all those in one place, that we would ask that if the council were inclined to approve this rezoning tonight, this is the list of those conditions that we would ask that a minimum be included as conditions to.
And those are the ones that are agreed upon between you and the applicant?
Yes, and.
If you'd like to give those to the clerk, and she can pass those down, thank you.
Thank you.
And I would say, we don't oppose the idea of this becoming residential property. Of course, it is zone general commercial. And in looking at what the general commercial uses are under, under the, under the city zoning ordinance, there are a number of uses that could be employed on that property now that, quite frankly, we believe would be a less desirable use of that property for, for the people, you know, the Country Club and the other surrounding neighbors there. And looking at the city's zoning ordinance, the permitted uses in general commercial, some of those are things like, you know, automotive storage yards, you know, boat service facilities, check-cashing stores, indoor firing ranges, halfway houses, nightclubs, dog kennels, pawn shops, retail package stores, and storage facilities. So, you know, quite frankly, we do believe that residential, residential development would be better than some of those uses that are permitted uses in the general commercial area. We do share some of the concerns that have been mentioned about traffic, about density, all of those things. But, and I don't envy your position in having to make the decision and balance those things, but, you know, residential, quite frankly, I think is a better use than some of those things that I just mentioned for the people, for the Country Club, for the people of Thornwood. And so with, if the council is inclined to grant the rezoning, we would ask that do so with these conditions that I passed around. If you've got any questions, I'd be happy to answer those.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Walker? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We're continuing with the public hearing for Z-25-01. Anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
Good evening.
Good evening. My name's Deborah Mason. I live at 11 Winfield Drive. I just want to reiterate a few things that we've discussed before, but I just want to make sure that it's brought to the attention of everyone. I agree with Cartersville Country Club, have no problem with the residential area. Last thing you want to see is another liquor store, package stores, what y'all call it, or another coffee shop popped up in the front of a residential area. But I am concerned about 80 units in nine and a half acres. I really think that's still a little too much. It's going to be approximately, I think, 160, maybe 180 vehicles added to our roads, which is already has an influx of traffic. And the other thing that I'm concerned about is the, I had to write it all down, because I always forget.
That's okay.
The environmental impact. So we need to make sure that they're giving information about that for stormwater and things like that, because that area, as I spoke before, has a really bad problem with flooding when it rains, really bad. And we've had a lot of rain. And putting those extra units might also put another larger impact as far as the stormwater runoff and whatnot. So that needs to be addressed as well, and the type of green space that's going to be put in that area. Also, there was traffic. There needs to be an in-depth study on the environmental impact as far as the additional cars on the road in that area. As you know now, we have a lot. So if we can address those things and have them address those things, I mean, the picture looks very pretty and everything as far as what the units, and make sure that they enforce what they're speaking of, because what I've seen lately with all the new development is whitewashed with some gray trimming and a black roof. And that is not curve appeal. And so therefore, if you're going to put that many units there, and I live in this area, and that impacts the value of my property and my taxes. I don't want my taxes to go up, because I have a neighborhood now that is whitewashed with gray trim and black roofs. So if we can address those areas, maybe we can come to some kind of resolve. But I do think we need to reduce that 80 units. It's too much. Thank you.
Thank you. I will mention the stormwater piece of that, and I think we talked about it a little bit in the first reading. And somebody here, please, correct me when I say this incorrectly, but when this is developed, it will be submitted to the city, the city does all the, it will, that development will be reviewed by the city, it'll be approved by the city, and quite frankly, right now, the result of that development, would it were to happen, is going to be contained. Now, I know if there's a drainage issue somewhere else, or something that might be impacting your home, this may not be the cause of it. I guess this to say, this may solve it, or you might still have that problem, but whatever problem you have will not be a result of this based on the engineering that the city does. Does that make sense?
It does.
Okay, thank you. I need you up here if you're going to talk, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. Our clerk needs to hear it for a minute, and I'm.
It does. Development, you always want the development to better your community. And so if you think the impact of this will not worsen, but will improve it, that's fine. But every time I come, I usually hear something about the retention pond, doesn't affect us. But if you don't live there, you don't see how the water flows. And if you're not standing in my backyard, you don't see how the water flows. So there is a problem already, so you don't want to cause the problem to worsen.
Right.
You want it to go for the better. So if we can, if they, if this, if this development will improve that, that would be great. But I still think it would be a problem with having 80 units on nine and a half acres. And it just seems like to me, everybody wants to do, wants to make the Cartersville Country Club happy, but you also need to make the current residents and the businesses in that area happy, because it is going to cause an impact.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Continuing on with Z-25-01, anybody wishing to step forward to speak for or against may do so at this time.
Hey, good evening. I'm Keith Kirkland, 9 Winfield Drive, Cartersville. And one thing I had a question about, I know this Country Club has conditions. Will those be made public before any decision is made, or is that just?
I can give you my copy right here. Yeah, it's all, it's all public record. The conditions, if we were to move forward with it this evening, and it looks like he's going to give you a copy of it right there.
Okay, yeah.
The conditions would be presented before we took any action.
Yeah, okay, that's, that's one thing, because I know everybody from the neighborhood who are here.
Sure, I understand.
So one of the questions that I did have last week, and then, or a couple of weeks ago, but I got a chance to look at the plans at home, and I know that the private drive on Thornwood, that's going to stay private, or is it going to become public?
It all, it's all private. And that's why the roads inside this development are private, because you can't put public streets in an area that's not connected to public roads.
Correct, so it'd be public.
No, those would all be, it's all.
No, Thornwood.
Thornwood will remain exactly as it is. It will still be private for the majority of it, though I think some portion of it is public, if I remember right.
Yeah, the public part.
Yeah, but the private.
Coming off of Grasdale is public.
Yeah, the private part will remain private.
So coming off of, um, Club. So coming off of Club Drive would be private. This part is state.
Yeah.
Clubview Drive is going to be private coming off of there?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay.
It remains the same as it is now.
And then there's a portion along Thornwood that is private as well, that, again, this, this particular development is not attached to any public road.
Right. Okay, I got you now.
Yeah.
Okay, so the developer is going to maintain that road, no city?
That is a true statement.
No, so the speed bumps, potholes?
Uh, the developer will maintain, or their homeowners association will maintain what is located inside that drawing up there.
No, I'm talking about outside, where it says private.
I'm aware of that. Outside of that, Thornwood, which is private, and part of Clubview Drive, which is private, that is maintained by whoever currently maintains it.
Which is.
This developer may or may not have responsibilities to participate in the maintenance of that.
They don't have that either right now, so they.
Yeah, I mean, but I, I don't know what they're, I, I don't want you to think that, you know, that they're obligated to maintain that. Whoever is obligated to maintain it as of today will, will remain that obligation, whether this project's approved or denied.
But we don't know who's obligated to maintain it. Do we know who's obligated to maintain it?
I do not know that off the top of my head.
It's a private owner.
Yeah.
Half of it's owned by the existing mini warehouse or storage facility, the other half is owned by the, or the current owner, current owner, who is being represented by the developers.
Gotcha, okay. Well, that kind of clears my, because my other concern was the two private drives that's coming off of Thornwood.
Yeah.
I know you don't have an entrance or an exit on Clubview Drive, and like you were stating earlier about the emergency services, ambulance, fire trucks, whatever, going in and out, it seemed like you would have a right out onto Clubview Drive, just the exit out of the subdivision, or just for safety issue, because like you said, 80 houses in there, that's a lot, and I still think that's a lot, so that's my main concern, if they could probably look into having some type of exit out onto Clubview Drive, just because everything going onto Thornwood, and then they continue on to Thornwood, back to Grassdale, and back to Clubview Drive, that's a, a lot of additional traffic for, you know, that. So will a decision be made tonight on this, or?
Uh, we're still working through that.
Okay.
But thank you. I, I will say this, I know a couple of people have mentioned the fact that 80 units is too much, and I'm not saying you're right or you're wrong, I'm saying that the, the development regulations are the densities for, for the density that is allowed in the city of Cartersville underneath, under this zoning, this density is allowed and appropriate for that classification.
Yeah, I understand that.
And like I said, there's a, saying legally it's fine, I'm not, again, I'm not refuting the fact that you say that 80 is too many, some would say 80 is the right amount, some would say less, some would say why not 20 more.
Correct, understand.
But it is, it is an allowed, it is allowed under our ordinance.
Yeah, I understand that, but I just, you know, like I say, we live over there because we kind of know, we see every day what's going on, so.
Absolutely.
That's why we think the 80 units, because you're looking at at least 160 people, plus the vehicles, school buses, and it's tight over there already, so.
I agree.
And I mean, I'm with the Cartersville Country Club, yeah, we, it's, of course, we'd like a subdivision instead of the commercial, the Dollar General, the warehouses, the smoke shops, yeah, we'd definitely rather add that, but it's just seemed like it's too many. So, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else wishing to step forward and speak for or against may do so at this time? Hello?
Everyone?
Hi.
My name is Lamari Jackson. I'm at six safety drive, right next to the development that we're talking about. And I'm back again to oppose the rezoning of this property that's in discussion from general commercial to RA 12. The locals are not opposed to this being developed, but what is being developed on it as it affects our daily lives. Those who own this land and those who plan to develop on it are not Cartersville residents, so they will not be negatively impacted by the amount of traffic that would take place if the zoning was approved. Upon my own research, I would ask for City Hall to reconsider rezoning for, to RA 12, RA 20. So instead of RA 12, please do RA 20 to legally limit the number of townhomes that would be built on this property. Cartersville Country Club and JD Developer have privately drafted their own private agreements, but where does this leave Thornwood subdivision? This leaves Thornwood to be taken advantage of, since Thornwood does not have a homeowners' association, the entire subdivision is forced to rely on your decision. We are asking that you all reject the zoning application and allow them to resubmit a better design that would suit not only their future mortgage holders, but those who are adjacent to this property. Again, I would like for you, to remind you all that they are proposing adding at minimum an extra 80 cars on one private street that is currently shared by Love Car Wash, Prime Storage, Thornwood, and Thorn, Sub, Thornwood subdivision. Our intersection shares Clubview Drive, which is already bottlenecked by Cartersville Country Club, Quick Trip, Floyd Urgent Care, a bank, a car wash, a storage facility, Thornwood, and entire business strip. I know that you probably don't want to hear about the dwelling issue, but I didn't recognize that that was caused by a big, the dwelling in the water reservoir. I do remember growing up, my mom would have us go out and clean that, that giant cement pipe, and it's large enough for a child to fit in. So that's been there for years, people have brought it to the city's attention, it still hasn't been fixed. And they proposed that these houses would cost 350,000 to 400,000, and I just don't think that's the area for it, considering there's a bunch of eyesores nearby, there's a car wash. And on that street, private, the private drive, that's already flooding itself, on the street itself, next to the car wash, it's flooding, you can't see the speed bumps, giant concrete holes in the ground, so it's already evident that there's a water issue in this area. And growing up, like, you can see the water, like even now, you can see that that area floods. So I'm assuming that when you do take the time to develop on this land, they will have to fix that water issue. And it's just a bunch of dirt and mud, and I couldn't imagine buying a house and being stuck in a $400,000 mortgage, as they proposed that these would cost, and pay that much and be locked in. So I just would like for you all to reconsider rejecting RA 12 and do it to RA 20, which is 20,000 square feet, which would drastically limit the amount of townhomes they could put. It would honor, it would almost cut it in half. So I care about Thornwood, I've been here my entire life, I've went through the entire Cartersville City School system, and I enjoy it here, and our neighbors, we love each other, we don't want to cause strife, or anybody cause strife against the, amongst us, because we're all crammed in this one area. And at the Love Car Wash that I believe is owned by the person who is the applicant, they don't have a stop sign. I almost got hit coming here because somebody just drove out of the car wash, car still wet, and they just drove out, nobody stops there. So we are having to be, like, subjected to bad traffic habits, because people don't realize that this is a neighborhood. Although, yes, you're getting your car washed, you're putting business, money back into the areas, but they're, they're just driving around. I get that that might not be an issue for them, but they don't have a stop sign, but in their proposing 80 townhomes.
Ms. Jackson, would you, you, you mentioned a drainage pipe?
Yeah.
Can you identify the location of that on that map if you feel comfortable doing so?
So the drainage pipe is right here, my house is right here in this cul-de-sac, and right here there's a big pipe that's sheer amongst all areas, and it floods all the way going right here.
Okay, thank you.
Can you guys take a look at that, Stephen?
Yes, sir.
I don't know if that's in the county, is that the county or the city?
Yeah, it's in the city.
Okay.
We'll take a look at it.
Thank you for doing that. And you were going to say something else?
Yeah, so many people in that neighborhood have, especially those who are adjacent to that property line, which majority of them have spoken about, we share their backyards, I, I know them, so like, we see the water, and it's been like that for decades. And there's a big pipe that is in the middle of all of our shared property, and I'm pretty, I've talked to somebody who's spoken to the city about it, and they've mentioned that if a child goes in there, who's responsible for it? And they said the property owners who are sharing that. So when they moved in, they didn't, they weren't, they weren't expecting that to be a problem, but since people have been bringing it to attention, it's made media news before, and still it has no traction, nobody's done anything, and we just deal with it. I believe somebody said they had to do foundation, fix the foundation because of the result of that flooding. And just putting that many people there when we already have an issue that we haven't resolved yet, I don't think that's, that's correct. Again, we love our city, you know, but we have to protect our people and our, the people's properties. I mean, people have worked decades to pay off their homes, and I just don't think it's right that we put that issue there, put that development there while we have issues that we haven't resolved that has been taking place for over 20 years. So that's just all I have. If you can, just please reject the RA 12 and do RA 20 to legally limit, and that would, that would definitely solve a lot of issues.
Thank you for your comments. Mr. Foy is in the back right there where you're sitting, and he'll make contact with you about that, that issue that you brought up, okay?
Okay.
Thank you. Continuing out the public hearing for Z 25-01. Anybody wishing to step forward may do so at this time?
Jay Barxell, 24 Winnebry Lane, Rome, Georgia. I'm, uh, I guess, I didn't know the best way to explain, paying those two guys tonight. Um, you know, I hear everybody's concerns, everybody has a valid concern, I go back to the use of the property. If, if there was ever a track to me that made sense, you know, that would make sense to, to go to townhomes, and it upgrades the area. I understand the, you know, the concern with Thornwood, and it's private, you know, Wayne, you know, I don't, I don't know what that looks like. I would assume it would go to the homeowners association. As far as going from 80 to 72 units, you know, I brought up 72 units to Mr. Deems because, you know, when we left the last meeting, I really, I heard that some of the feedback, what I heard was, hey, we don't want to go through the complexities of a bunch of variances, and having to change every knickknack, is what I heard. You, you say just a minute ago, you just want to stick with it and go, we need to submit a plan that's set up and as is, and you guys stamp off, and, and the conditions are printed as a part of the plan, is what I, what I heard some say. You know, with that being said, obviously, Jonathan, I, I think that whatever we can do to assist the city in getting a clearer picture of what we would like to do for this property, and to maximize values for everyone in here, and everyone involved, we would be committed to doing that. I don't think, you know, we've gone from 96 units to 87, I think the lady on teleconference said 83, and there was a plan at one point with 83, I think, that went to planning commission. And then we came down to 80, which, you know, essentially doubled the, doubled the parking by percentage and reduced, cut the density, you know, the units in half. You know, so when I left last time, we, you know, Jonathan found a plan that's a rear entry and the, the, has the right layout. I think if we go to 72 units though, Jonathan, it would give us the ability to give them some say-so in the plan that is being picked there. And we oversee the process from start to finish. So whatever we can do, obviously, we would love for you guys to rezone the property tonight, and we could submit everything as conditions through our LDP process, obviously that has to be approved and puts, seems like it puts staff in charge of that, or, you know, if we need to table it and come back, we could do that, and obviously, I will apologize for not having a floor plan. We'll have clarity in the floor plans. I, I would go to three bedrooms because of the 10% rentals. Three bedrooms are going to be more desirable for purchases. In the, I sold, you know, 60 last year in Rome, and the three bedrooms that, you know, they sent, they tend, seem to go to individuals. You know, two bedrooms, you, you have people coming in looking for blocks of them. Just the three bedrooms can, can swallow a larger family. But we appreciate y'all's consideration, and anything we can do to work with you, we're willing to do. Thank you.
And seeing none, I'll close the public hearing, and for Z 25-01. And council, as you heard Mr. Lovell say earlier, there's, there's a few different options you've had after hearing from, from all sides here. Obviously, you have the typical up-down tabling it, which I don't really know gets us anywhere closer to, to really anything, because it, or it can be remanded back to the planning commission for, which would, in my opinion, give time for the developers who I think are showing good faith in trying to find something that's going to fit with the community, be beneficial to the, to the, to the adjacent neighborhood, and then also give staff an opportunity to kind of re-massage it and go before the planning commission and try to work out something that works for everybody. Those, as the way I see it, are, are the options as you had before you, and so I'll turn it over to y'all to do whatever you feel you wish you might want to do.
I have one more question that I thought I was going to get back up and speak. So are y'all going to repave Thornwood?
So let me.
I'm sorry.
I'm going to reopen the public hearing simply because you have a question about, no, that's totally fine. If the applicant or somebody representing would come forward, please. And if you'll, again, just to make it easier on our clerk, Councilwoman Cordell, you would please ask the question of them, and so that they can answer that.
I just wanted to ask a question, are y'all planning on repaving Thornwood?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Yes, ma'am. And I, and it would be my assumption, we would put that into the homeowners association to be maintained in the future.
And?
And deming it as it is a private road.
So on Thornwood and where Clubview is, there's no stop sign there at all? Where Clubview is in Thornwood, there's, when you're turning on Thornwood?
Yes, ma'am.
There is no stop sign there. I went and visited the property yesterday. So that was just, when she was talking about this other stop sign. And then when she's talking about the issue that hadn't been dealt with in 20 years, what is, what is y'all's thoughts on that with the, the drainage system and what she was talking about leading up to the back of the properties?
So just, just for clarity, the property that's in back does not drain to the retention pond that's on the property that we're talking about. None of that water comes to that retention pond. That retention pond is for the car wash and everything that's up there now. So that water goes in a different direction and goes to, I guess, Pettit Creek, but none of it drains from where their yards are into this property or that retention pond. Retention pond is only for the nine acres and the car wash, and I think where the storage facility is, and maybe the hotel. So that area, it doesn't, it's not anything that we created, or the previous person created.
Right. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
And since I reopened the public hearing, I'll give anybody else an opportunity that wants to come up and speak to do so. But you have to, you got to come up here, though. Appreciate the hand up.
During the first meeting, there was somebody on the planning commission team that said that it was directly affected, that we do share the same area. So if there's notes that were taken verbally from that meeting, I would like for y'all to go back through it. I can't tell you who the man was, but it was under his, my understanding that this person did work, or was possibly a part of the approval for.
It would have been, I don't recall that company made, but it might have, would have, what's that?
The very first meeting.
So they have all the information, which is why I said that things were approved and that we're seeing the issues from it now. I understand that change codes, change codes change over time, but we, as a city, need to make sure that we get up to code compliant now that the issues are arising. But from my understanding, this person said that it was a direct effect, so I would like for you all to come together, research, and get that clarification, just so we can make sure that misinformation isn't spread.
Thank you. If you can clarify that, if you're able to.
Yeah, that planning commission, I believe, heard it twice, they handled it, and then in between, during the first one, one of the planning commission members had noted his thoughts on the drainage out there. And Mr. Harbury, in between the two planning commission meetings, went out and did analysis, just off the cuff of where the drainage achievements are, elevations out there from the drainage shows, and what going back to that actually pond. So I, I don't know where Mr. Culverhouse got his information, but he did seem pretty confident of the development in that area.
Okay.
And his familiarity with Thornwood. And his familiarity with Thornwood.
Thank you.
But again, if this development was approved, it would go through the engineering review process to meet all the standards and requirements that have been adopted by the city. So, I think there's, that's the same with any new development. It's going to meet current engineering criteria.
Thank you. All right. Again, I reopened up the public hearing. Is there anybody else who wishes to speak?
Yeah, I know you're talking about the drainage and I'm not sure, the gentleman, if he's referring to, they came out last summer and they ran cameras through the pipe and I just had-
That's a whole different, that's, you're probably going to go to worst-
Stormwater part.
Okay, so, but yeah, this is because he was, like, my neighbor and I, we do have the water problem. She has it more than I do. So, I stopped and asked the gentleman, he said, well, he ran the camera through all the pipes in the subdivision and he said that the backup was on the private property, not in the Thornwood subdivision. So, that's when I assumed that the outlet is either coming off of, I know he just said Pettit Creek, coming over the Pettit Creek, but I was just assuming that it came, I know you're not supposed to assume, but came into the retention pond behind Southview Drive. So, I just wanted to clarify that. But if you're saying it's not, it's going somewhere else, I guess it's another problem.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Anyone else? All right. Now, I'm really closing the public hearing for Z-25-01, which is fine. Again, this is exactly what local government's supposed to do. We're trying to get as many voices and get as much information as we can to make a decision. So, again, council, your options are rezone, yes, rezone, no, table or remand back to the, to the planning commission or take no action at all.
I make a motion to, for it to be remanded back to the planning commission.
I've got a motion, a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? So, the motion carries to remand back to the planning commission by a vote of five to one and-
Well, I didn't have a chance to ask any questions.
Me either.
I just want to ask quick, like, Randy, on this, ultimately, this, the way we're doing this, the Country Club, Thornwood and everyone else is getting a lot more of a say in being more involved than if somebody just went in and went under the current zoning, correct?
Correct.
I mean, ultimately, they still got to go through planning.
Rezoning is a public process, but it's currently zone D.C. It could be developed as-
So, everybody's getting to massage this a little bit more than they would if warehouses went in or whatever, maybe.
That is correct.
But these-
Those will come back before us.
Well, separate question. So, they do warehousing or whatever it is, Country Club doesn't get the option of negotiating this, right?
That is correct. There would be a buffer required and it would be designed to the city's specified-
And the fastest process of getting them back in front of us was what we just made a motion to do, other than approving tonight. We didn't get that chance because we-
Technically, if you tabled it, it might have got here two weeks quicker, but, you know, it's, yeah.
I'm cool. Thanks for letting me ask a question.
Thank you. Moving on to T-25-01, Mr. Menino. And actually, before you do that, just for those that might not be as familiar, this goes back to the planning commission. There will be advertised, there will be a public hearing, there'll be another opportunity to make recommendation and then it will come back to the city council and somewhere in that timeline where there will be two more public hearings, like we've gone through this process, and then some resolution. Now, T-25-01.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a proposed text amendment to the current side ordinance, specifically the section dealing with electronic freestanding signs. Right now on, I always lose the name of that road, Old Mill Road, electronic freestanding signs are allowed from Henderson Drive West. The applicant is looking to extend that from Henderson Drive down to Terrell Drive. With that, planning commission did hear this, did hear from some opposition about expanding that roadway beyond where it was originally approved from and they did recommend denial of this proposed text amendment.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions for Randy at this point? Hearing none. I'll open up a public hearing for T-25-01 and ask anybody wishing to step forward to speak for, against, to do so at this time, keeping in mind that everything in the first reading was recorded and heard and we want to make sure we're plowing new ground. But if you really feel like you want to get up and talk, we're certainly, while we're here. So, anybody going once, going twice? I'll close the public hearing for T-25-01 and we'll turn it over to council for discussion and questions at this point. How about that? Are there questions and discussions that need to be have relative to T-25-01? Okay. That being the case, I will, a motion would be in order.
Make the motion to.
Motion.
Lots of motions.
Councilwoman Hodge?
Make a motion to deny the sign request.
Second.
Okay, so I have a motion and a second to deny the request, the text change amendment. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? And the motion carries unanimously. We'll move on to ZMA-25-01.
Yes, thank you again, Mayor and council. This is an annual amendment to the official zoning map of the city. It includes the previous year's zoning cases that went through and annexations that were approved. With that, planning commission did recommend approval of the annual map amendment.
Thank you. I'll open up a public hearing for ZMA-25-01. Anybody wishing to comment, speak for, against, may do so at this time. Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing for ZMA-25-01. Turn it over to council for consideration.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Mr. McKee, if your legs are not asleep, come on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and council. The item that we have before you tonight is the electric department's requesting approval to purchase overhead electrical distribution inspection services. We received two bids through a formal request for proposal process, RFP-25101, and deemed the bid from Fast Forward to be the best based upon price. We requi, excuse me, we request authorization to purchase the services from Fast Forward for a total not to exceed $100,000 and this is a budgeted expense.
Thank you. Any questions for Tom on this? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. While Mr. Greer is making his way up, Chair will entertain a motion to add three items to the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Three items added. Mr. Greer, you're up.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This item is for the construction and installation of an underground fiber pathway to be built from our Irwin Street data center to the intersection of Old Mill Road and River Road. This will give us triple the fiber capacity we have right now as we're almost out of our original fiber from 1997. The total amount from our contractor, NCI, for labor and installation is $76,694.40. There's also charges for materials from Utilicom Supply for $28,029.45 as well as fees with permission, application fees from CSX that we estimate to be around $10,000. So, we're asking for an amount not to exceed $115,000. This is a budgeted item and will be funded with the 2020 SPOLOST and we recommend this for your approval.
Thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. Mr. Foy, you've got the next three.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Earlier February 24th, City Garage opened sealed bids for a 3/4 ton truck for Public Works and a small all-wheel drive off-road SUV for Stormwater. The advertisement for bids were posted on the City of Carsville website and the Georgia Procurement Registry. Eight proposals were received for the 3/4 ton pickup truck that ranged from $47,530 to $58,989. Delivery time ranged from two days to 14 weeks. Ten bid proposals received for the all-wheel drive off-road SUV and ranged from $22,663 to $53,989. Delivery time ranged from two to two days to 14 weeks as well. However, the all-wheel drive vehicles range significantly in product type. After evaluation by Public Works staff and a garage representative, Public Works recommends the purchase of a 2025 Ford F-250 from Peach State Truck Centers for a price of $47,540. This was within $10 of matching the lowest bid, which was a Chevrolet 2500 HD. It is staff's opinion that we remain consistent with our other Ford fleet for maintenance and replacement stock. In addition, our staff recommends the purchase of a 2025 Ford Bronco Sport for a price of $28,908 from Prater Ford. This Bronco met all specifications and will be more efficient for our inspectors who will be on construction sites and carrying inspection equipment. We chose to specify a vehicle like this over the smaller pickups due to the price being lower with the small SUV. Public Works feels that both these vehicles are the best selection based on acceptable specifications, price and delivery time. We recommend approval to purchase this vehicle. These vehicles are budgeted and will be paid from both divisions' capital expense account, Public Works and Stormwater.
Thank you. Any questions for Mr. Foy? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Next item, please.
Okay. Next item is for the Irwin Leek Street Drainage Improvement Project. CTI engineers did an accounting of all materials used on this project on behalf of Carsville and found that the actual materials used for the project were less than the original project materials estimate. A reconciliation of there being less materials used resulted in a savings of $8,360.20 to reduce the overall project cost from $2,072,195 to $2,63,834.80. The savings for this change order, which is technically change order number four, is, as I mentioned before, $8,360.20 to reconcile the overall project cost so that the project can officially be closed out. All right. Okay. Overall, the project ended up being $102,695.20 less than the original contract price. The original contract price was $2,166,530. The final overall project cost was $2,063,834.80. And this is the fun part. The project has been paid for out of the American Rescue Plan Act, ARPA funds. This is not a budgeted item, but it's been determined that these services would qualify for ARPA funding as the city feels that this project would help our Stormwater Division manage, reduce and recapture stormwater drainage that would result in reducing flood at this location. Therefore, this project would meet the requirements for eligibility of ARPA funds. This is a budgeted item. Public Works recommends approval of this amendment.
Thank you. It got tested shortly after it was finished and I think it did a pretty darn good job. I think you agree with that.
That was one place we'd have run.
Looks really nice, too. Any other questions or comments? If not, a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Final one for you, Stephen.
Okay, thank you. This is in relationship to the Tennessee Street, State Route 61 at Collins Drive project. It's for right-of-way acquisition. Public Works is seeking permission for the mayor to sign the attached agreements to purchase right-of-way needed to install a roundabout at the intersection of Collins Drive and Tennessee Street. City Carsville has already signed a grant agreement with GDOT for GDOT to fund $1,250,000 or 70% of the total project cost, whichever is less. The total estimated cost of project is $2,500,000. Approximately $750,000 will come from the 2020 SPOLOST, road, streets, sidewalks, bridges and stormwater improvements category and the remaining amount will be funded by $500,000 from, coming from Bartow County. So, we're seeking permission to get these agreements signed to acquire this right-of-way.
Thank you. Mayor will call for a motion from Councilwoman Hodge.
Yes, please. Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Carrie, thank you for your diligence and advocacy for this. I knew you, if you were here, you'd have jumped on it. There were little delays. I want to make sure you had the floor for that one.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. I appreciate everybody's involvement, too. Glad we're all looking for things to improve on our end and I'm grateful.
Very good. Thanks, Stephen. Thank you. Mr. Porta?
Copan Morris, professional services agreement. Talked to Boyd Morris, the two help out as project manager on the new rec center that will be breaking ground in early April and looking forward to that being done in about 12 months. We met earlier this week with Reeve Young and Croft, kind of tweaking plans a little close to getting done. They're actually on Tuesday's plan review, but I recommend approval, hire Copan Morris to assist in this project.
Thank you. Any discussion? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Mr. DeLeon, you have the next item, please. Auto cab license renewal.
Good evening, Mayor and council. This request is for a three-year auto cab license renewal. This software is used regularly by the engineering division to design and update the water and sewer systems. The cost for three users is $22,116.48. This is a budgeted expense and we recommend approval.
Thank you. Questions on this item? If not, a motion's in order.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. Thank you, Mike. A lot of time to sit there and ask why you weren't the first item on the agenda, right? Mr. Archer, you going to handle these ordinance things that are going on or?
I don't know.
Okay. You're just ready to get at it. It's all right. We got first reading of ordinances. Mr. Lovell, you've got this design criteria.
Yeah. The design criteria is basically clarifying high and standard pressure zones for water distribution for various types of development. It is recommended by staff for your approval.
Thank you. And we'll take this up for consideration since it is the first reading of the ordinance. Is anybody have a question on this ordinance? Very good. We'll take this up for our, at our council meeting minute, council meeting on March 20th and if you'll move on to the next first reading of an ordinance.
Yes, the next one is adopting new rate fees for the fire hydrant flow test that the city conducts whenever fire hydrants are put in.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions on this? Once again, first reading of the ordinance and it will be taken up for a second reading on March 20th. Now to the added items to the agenda. Step forward, Mr. Archer.
Good evening, Mayor and council. Parks and Recreation is seeking approval of Advanced Sports Group's pricing proposal for their scope of work, including turf, bullpens and fencing as related to the Dellinger Park softball project. The pricing is based on use of Sourcewell Contract Number 060518-S11 and the total is $1,329,505 and staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions on this or I'm sure you want to comment on?
Well, I know David's been working on this. We've been working a little while with the Architect's CPL on this one, but just our total costs, this is the turf portion of it and the work on the fields, we will have some additional costs for the dugouts. We're looking at a little over $2 million for our phase and school system to build the field house is about $2 million approximately. Depending on, we're actually going to issue the RFP for the construction manager at risk. If those estimated numbers come down, then it may come down, our costs may come down a little bit, but around $2 million for this total project.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Porta, you've got the last two.
Yes, sir. I'll just go ahead with the CPL. The addendum number one that was handed out, essentially the field house that we initially proposed as a school has grown in size, but the school system is going to pay for that. Most of this work from CPL, Architect, is going to be paid for by the school system. I talked to Dr. Pierbock, they're good with this additional cost, but I recommend approval of addendum number one to the original agreement with CPL.
Thank you. Questions, comments or motions?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously. And last item.
Yes, sir. Contract for performing services with Bartow Recovery. As you recall, we've been getting opioid settlement funds and Bartow Recovery approached us a few months ago, met with Mayor and I and Carrie Hodge is involved in this, but they've asked, started asking whether, once they got everything set up, asked for $50,000. Again, it's not a cost of the city, we can only expend those monies based on certain agreements under the- We can only expend those monies based on certain agreements under the opioid settlement, and this, they meet these requirements, and they'll have to continue to meet those requirements, but I recommend approval of this contract.
Thank you. I'll also mention that, uh, Bartow County is doing exactly what we're doing, uh, as we work together. Uh, the opioid settlement money, as Mr. Porta mentioned, there's certain things you can do to, uh, to, to use for those funds. I know Ms. Mitchum is here with Bartow Recovery tonight, and, um, she's got a plan, and, uh, both city and county are saying this is the vehicle we're going to use to, uh, to send that opioid money to help those people that are, uh, trying to overcome addiction, so. Um, that being said, if there's any other questions, we could do that now, or Chair will entertain a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor indicate by saying aye.
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 And the motion carries unanimously. Is there any other business that needs to come for counsel tonight?
And Mayor, the tabled item is remaining on the table.
It is. And, and the ma, and, and the, and the man with the tripod's not here, but...
Yes.
I'm gonna take just one minute. I wanted to explain to y'all for one minute, just so you would know what you're investing in very specifically with Recovery Bartow. My name is Jessica Mitchum. I'm the executive director of Recovery Bartow. The funds are specifically to have a peer, which is a person who is in long-term recovery in the ER and in mother-baby at Piedmont Hospital. Um, I believe this will be an enormous help to what the traffic they see in our ER. So many friends who are in drug crisis come in and out, and in and out, and in and out of our ER, and having somebody who is in recovery in that space to help try to more successfully connect them to detox and treatment, I think will make an enormous difference for individuals who are in crisis and also for staff at Piedmont. Um, our staff that do this work quickly self-identify as being in recovery, quickly tell friends that they need, like, I know exactly where you are, I've been where you are, there's help, let me help you connect to that help. So that is specifically what these funds will accomplish. We're really, really excited to be able to do that work.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
As I like to say, we got the easy part. We got to just send that money to you, and now you got the hard part, so thank you for that. Uh, one last item. Uh, Little League opening day is this Saturday. If, uh, if, if you've never been, uh, you need to be. And, uh, when we talk about having a small-town Americana feel, uh, there's, it doesn't get any more, uh, down home than being at the, uh, Little League fields this Saturday at nine o'clock. Weather's going to be fantastic. I haven't looked at the forecast, but I'm hoping, I'm...
About 67, I would hope so.
There you go. So, uh, so anyhow, uh, that's what we got. We've been here a while tonight, but I think we did, uh, the people's work, and, uh, if there's nothing else to add, Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn.
So move.
Stay gold.[1779.13]